Any others? I hope that's been helpful. Thank you for your advice. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. You're welcome. On the actual license of the name?
Yes, ma'am. I talked with young... I didn't want to pronounce his name. Jack J. Singh. I ran a criminal history checks out by ABC Monroe. They said it wants to read approval here. They'll come down within this week and issues state vice. He already has a business in Rabel. We're running, so it'll be just about a week before. So at this time, I do approve. I know if I can consider as well.
Thank you. Move to accept the recommendation, please chief.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect it unanimously approved. My, my.
He was sick and so they emailed the, um...
The report?
Yeah, the report, yeah.
There was nothing we had to act on. Item number eight, number nine, sorry. Mayor Pro Tim election.
In the past, we've probably been going two, one, two, three. I have not, uh...
Mrs. Johnson.
It's been bad.
Mrs. Johnson.
Was there some information provided at the LMA concerning that?
Well, in the, uh... In the newsletter, there is some information that we need to be aware of. Oh, I don't have a copy of it with me. But there is some information that we need, you know, look at. It's gonna bring me up to date because there's some changes that have been made in reference to the Mayor Pro Tim and the contact with the mayor being out of town and how he can be contacted due to technology and things that have changed. In the past, when Edward the mayor was out of town, then that's when the Mayor Pro Tim would step in. But in this particular case, it explains all of the formalities and what needs to happen, you know, in that case and how it can be rearranged or whatever arrangements you might need to make, you know, if you're out of town and while you're gone and so forth and so. But it's in that newsletter from the LMA. Right. We need to pay attention to that.
If Ms. Betty does not object, I'll make a motion that she be Mayor Pro Tim next of the month. I'll send the proper move. Send second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect it unanimously approved. Item number ten. The Welch family? On this occasion, even though how sad it might be, but we do wanna recognize your father for the soldier that he truly was. We'd like to recognize him with the proclamation, the City of Wentzboro proclamation, whereas James Trumon Welch has been an employee of the Wentzboro Fire Department since August 4th, 1970. Whereas James Trumon Welch was an active fire chief for 19 faithful years. Whereas James Trumon Welch served faithfully for 42 years at the Wentzboro Fire Department. Now therefore, I, Jackie R. Johnson, Mayor of the City of Wentzboro, do hereby join with family and friends and celebrate the life and legacy of James Trumon Welch for his many years of service in this community. This 20th day of office, 2012, and declare this day as Trumon Welch Day. In honor of Trumon Welch for 42 years of dedicated service to the Wentzboro Fire Department so others may live, Mayor Jackie R. Johnson, the City of Wentzboro, 8th month, 20th day, 2012.
P. Mayor, number four, number dog adopted, six fostered, two, 300 pin, 21, 300 pound dog, D. We have one killed, dog. Also, one in the pen, total 22.
Thank you, Chief. Properly reflected.
May I move after yourself the main officer?
Second. It's properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of both, you have a second, right? Let the record reflect it unanimously approved. Fire chief, my report. Mayor since last council meeting. Had 23 calls to the department. Nine in town, 14 outside city. Year to date, we've answered dispatched 149 calls to the department. Thank you, Chief. Your first report, fire chief. What is your pleasure?
May I make a motion that he accept the fire chief's my report?
Properly. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect it unanimously approved. Police chief.
Before I give my report back to Mayor and Council to allow me to make an amendment to our budget, let me skip it to Albert. I'm taking the records to higher police officer.
Make an amendment to what, Mr. Higher Police Officer?
I to the...
Okay, alright. Do you have any other motion?
That we allow that amendment, we add, mean that all, that be added to the amendments?
Second. It's properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect it unanimously approved, Chief.
At this time, I'd like to recommend Billard Williams to be employed by the Wentzboro Police Department. Mr. Williams is a post-certified officer, certified in 2003, was certified there in Northfield in Monroe.
Move to accept the recommendation of the police chief?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect it unanimously approved.
Okay, month of the 4th, July 17th, March 20th. Had seven criminal charges at the highest for those charged with theft of goods, which is based on the Myers-Will-Sins shop with the lawnmower, followed by disturbing peace charges. For the year to date, we had 380 same arrests to report by Police Department on traffic citations issued 37 tickets. We worked 17, had an accident against three of those on parking lots. We took 602 calls for the month, which is a very high number of calls, basically due to students being out. Also, today is the first day that schools started. I'd like to report that we had no incidents in school about 4:30 and 5:00. We did get a call about a lost child and returned goods and we located that child back in the morning. So this was truly a good day.
Your first chief, my report. What is your pleasure?
May I make a motion that we accept? Police chief, my report.
Properly moved. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect it unanimously approved. Newty Center will report.
Have two events for the month. Father's wedding and community event.
Your first community will report, what is your pleasure?
I assume we will accept the report as written and presented.
Properly moved.
Second, with discussion.
And second.
Discussion. And it's not pertaining to this, I didn't want to leave Community Center. Where do we stand on future events for the Community Center? And right now, if that ordinance is an issue, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about events that will not have alcohol. Where do we stand on that? Because I know people that want to rent this place, they don't want, they don't want a party, they want to rent for other reasons with no alcohol service. I don't know where we stand on that and people will ask.
Of course, I know what we have, the, uh... In that particular capacity is the, uh... The contract that presently being used, I think a copy of it was placed in your folder. I saw I had a copy, but I'm going to ask that it be adjusted and that that adjusts, especially if where it has alcohol, any places that it has alcohol, it be stricken that the, uh... The age of those individuals that are 18 must have, if it's a party for kids that are 18, must have regardless, it still need two officers involved, regardless if you have chaperones or not. So when you go into that particular contract, if you have, I think we have a copy of it. I'm gonna have to say, uh... A minute? This is what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay. You're asking that item number three, where it says no alcoholic beverages are to be sold, we should also include are nor serve or consumed on the premises. That is the law according to the ordinance that has been written. Also, item number four, it should begin by saying that the Lisi is responsible for the amount of $20 hourly for the off-duty officers and two officers are deemed necessary when there is a party for children under age 18. Also, item number nine, lights must be turned on, and this is probably could be up for discussion, uh... Turned on, uh... Turned on at 12 o'clock AM and that the center be cleaned out or at least cleared out, I'm sorry, by 12:30. If you want to extend those hours, then we may, you know, we may wanna consider doing that depending on the source and the individuals that are participating in that activity. If this is acceptable, then I would say that the, uh... That the governing body would be in agreement with this. If not, then I'll ask that those changes be considered at this time. That was for non-alcoholic activities until we can get a change or look at a change on the, on the ordinance that is being, that is already in place.
But we can come back to that later.
Sure.
When she go on and...
And utilize the activities that are not alcoholic related. Alcohol.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
With the, with the changes you just made, I'm trying to see what the difference is. I only got that one was 12 AM, but right now, we already have two officers, one is parties under 18.
Okay, a party that's under 18, okay. But I'm saying, it's already definitely, it's saying, I'll leave it there like it is, yeah.
But what's the difference? I'm trying to see what you added other than, other than the 12 AM.
Uh, item number three, where it says no alcoholic beverages ought to be sold, then we will strike on the premises however alcohol may be served. If you're gonna strike that, you're gonna say that no alcoholic beverages are to be sold or served or consumed on the premises, period. And of course, we have to keep in mind that for kids that are 18 and younger, that there is a curfew. That curfew is 11 o'clock. I think it may be extended, it's an extended pass 11 o'clock on weekends.
What we used to do on ballgame nights, we'd give a third man when the game's over.
So that would be 11:30, we have a new time frame to be in and the police won't write them a ticket for being out, or... Therefore, it will change, you know, instead of 2:00 AM on item number nine, especially in case of teens, then we'll be looking at 11 o'clock as per, as per curfew. 12 o'clock adults.
That only teen?
Come in 12 o'clock adults until we get a change in the rest of our contract.
Are we in agreement? Do you need a motion? Do you want my vote to add a motion?
Yeah, and if we wanna make a motion to change the, uh... The contract that is presently in place, but these, uh... Amendments take place as of this date, then I have no problem with that. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Maybe you want to allow the committee to look over those areas and bring them back to the committee.
I think so. Those areas and also, uh... The, uh... Our advisory fellow out there, Kelly Martin, uh... The information he gave to us could also be important and should be considered.
I think that the committee...
That's proven to work.
Well, we, we called some cities that were smaller, larger, and some that are the same size as the City of Wentzboro and Mr. Martin, it's pretty true, every one of them is following this, uh... Contract right here. And we checked on prices on the insurance and all, there was a little question about that and that there are reasonable insurance policies that he came, that he's put on here, very good. That's what we've kinda been working towards and he's kinda enlightened a lot of us to help us. We appreciate that.
Richard Jerome, that's who we have, so.
Yes.
And Rick Jerome.
You want your motion to approve the second number four?
Yeah.
I'll present my motion. And if he approves it, we'll report. Second. Second.
We're just in.
Well, he made, his motion was to... And his motion, his motion was to add, to put a band-aid on the contract and to accept the report.
Okay.
So I'll present my motion.
About the insurance, how much?
So this is the goal before, uh... The Community Center Committee.
Yes, I want to know, how much does a million dollars of insurance cost for one month?
Well, it's a little variation depending on who you get your policy with.
Well, I mean, ballpark.
We called some...
Let's have from...
Kelly, go ahead.
Low, medium, and high.
Just for example, a personal experience, uh... I added a million dollars of coverage, uh... On a separate property that I, where I hunt, and that's two different things, of course. So this being a venue where there will be lots of people is totally different from that. But I added a million dollars coverage for 50 bucks a year.
So how much?
50 dollars. I added that to my existing home policy.
Okay, that's a difference. We add too.
But I've been told they're anywhere between 300 and 500 dollars.
So we have to get it once a year.
350 to 500.
It's about great.
350 to 500 dollars.
It's 400.
Now, we don't consider that...
An event, yeah, an event.
Depending on whether or not alcohol is being served.
And that makes a big difference.
Mine's 400 dollars, well, that we want. We don't have any alcohol. Don't we, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be between 500, uh... 350 and 500.
Now, Mr. Jerry Colton, at the, uh... At the LMA convention, he was confronted and we asked him about that, of course, his, uh... With the, with this management, he said, of course, that we could possibly look at 500, uh... 500 dollars, half of these dollars if necessary. But even though a million dollars gives what is required by most, but if we wanted to at least make sure that we have nothing less than that, so it may, you know, it's gonna be, in this particular case, either 500 or maybe, it depends on, you know, the stretch of, of the mayor, but he wanted us to make sure that we have, that to have some type of insurance, uh... On, uh... You know, on the facility by the, by the Lisi. In addition, uh... There are some, there are also some agents that will, such as Allstate and others, that will possibly allow you to do it, you know, to act like, like he did on his, to his insurance and of course, they would cover. You feel, you feel?
Yes, Marvell.
Well, I'm paying 500,000 dollars. Well, I've got 500,000 dollars, lot building insurance in my park, so I'm paying like 78 dollars a month, whether it has anything, well, maybe gift from this building, but that's what I'm paying. So you may wanna double that on the, on the million dollars, just, just as a guide.
I think that falls in, we're pretty close to, uh... Mr. Mahoney's recommendation was to lower the, uh... The cost of the center and, uh... Allow money to purchase, uh... Insurance.
I think that's something probably we need to, uh... When the committee meets, to go with these recommendations here, I think also we need, we probably could look at some insurance companies and when we have those people come in for one reason, we have a, a list of, like, so we would, so we're not a helpless adjustment.
Mr. Mahoney, do you have anything you'd like to...
We didn't hear the economic level report, we're not gonna hear the economic.
I'm sorry.
I'm not trying to pick you off.
You did throw me off.
Right. Sorry about that.
No problem.
That's okay, I, I've been overlooked a many times. How's y'all? First of all, I'd like to say that we, the mayor and Shirley and I were visited by Mr. SQ, who is a project coordinator working for the governor's office and for the capital asset project of 100, uh... 220,000 dollars, uh... That, uh... That they, they have approved for the farmer's market. Uh... He gave us some good insight. Uh... He was very excited about the project. Uh... He is an architect, uh... He knows, uh... The business and he feels like it would be a tremendous asset for this community and an economic cabinet, a positive economic impact for the community. Uh... That was just some information that he had brought to us and wanted us to make sure that we consider. The, uh... The RA application that we had submitted, uh... For the 150,000 dollars for the farmer's market program has not, uh... Been reviewed and, uh... Decision has not been made on that at the present time. We are in the final stages, we are in the final, uh... Selection, uh... To be reviewed, to be, uh... Accepted or, or, or to be approved or disapproved. We, we have no idea at this time. Hopefully, we will have it by the end of the month, uh... So it can be brought to you, gentlemen, by the next council meeting. Also, Mr. Danielle Gaylor, uh... With the Department of Aviation, Louisiana Department of Transportation Aviation, uh... Has been in touch with me and, uh... And, and we have been approved for the 10,000 dollar money, uh... For the airport lobby, uh... Lounge, lobby, whatever you wanna call it, uh... To be renovated, uh... To a standard that would be acceptable by our community and our guests who fly into our community. Uh... Also, she has, she has sent us the information and let us know that, that we are to submit the billing, uh... Of, uh... What it's gonna cost us to do that, uh... Up to the first 10,000 dollars to her, to utilize the state funding money first, uh... And if it's less than the 20,000 dollars by the 10 and 10, that is gonna be, uh... That we would not have to, uh... Go into the state, I mean, to the city's funding to, to make that happen. We feel like that it's gonna be, um... 10,000 dollars or somewhere in that close neighborhood of approved projects, of approved materials and, and construction, uh... That is gonna be utilized in the construction of that. Uh... We have got some approval from, uh... Our, our local entities that's gonna help us on construction with our support. Uh... We will have to get with the committee, mayor and committee and decide exactly what we want to do, uh... How much construction we wanna do, uh... And, uh... And, and so we can get started on this. We, we do not wanna linger too long because we're gonna utilize the state funding and rent money that is out there. entertain any questions that you may have.
Monday finance. Thank you.
Reports, um... As far as the percentages on those, you know, is based on last year's budget, so it's gotta kinda change, but the, um... In your, we should be about eight to nine percent of our budget. We had, can we discuss that, we've got construction permits? Um... We budgeted, uh... 30,000 dollars. My budget's been a little bit more than that, but we already collected through July 35,000 that, uh... That gets on that hard rule. Swamp Hill lady shows up as 24,000 dollars because, uh... Daniel Swamp Hill. Let's see, miscellaneous income was 46 percent. That was because we got a 12,000 dollar insurance check on the damage to the roof from the storm. So that minus 46. So it'll probably stay, it'll stay above here. Shop salary shows 30 percent. We swapped some people around to, um... But that's probably not gonna be reflected until August from street department to shop. We just had one guy budgeted and so we actually paid, well, we paid two guys out of this plus 46 percent. This recreation salary was 70 percent because of just the two months of the summer workers and, and the same thing on pools and, and the, um... Ball fields. The utility system fund, administrative expenses was a little high because some of the convention costs and US, USF office was a little high. We ordered some, I think it was some printed envelopes that go outside and so that was probably order a year's supply or two years' supply at one time. Just brought that up a little bit. But overall, general funding, I mean, our utility system fund's expenses were 6 percent of your old budget and general fund is 7 percent. So next month, we'll have to, what the budget actually is. So next month, we'll have what the budget actually is.
Move to accept the report is given.
Properly moved? And second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, Mahoney, do you have, do you have something to say?
I do, mayor, I had one person made a question about the old door you took off of the old hangar that burned out here and if they were for sale or who was going to put them up for a bid or whatever. And what status quo would be on that?
Fire a port close and have a bid on it.
Okay. Is that something we were doing, entertaining doing or?
Yeah.
Okay, well, he's real interested in purchasing, so he's willing to want a bid on the code.
We'll see, we have some multiple items that we do all at the same time.
Okay. I'll do the number, Mike. That's all I have, Mike.
Thank you. Gil? Mr. McCarthy?
Mayor, we got a fire move on Old Coffee Street, right across at this voting dispenser, right on the edge right there, across from the chief's parents. That plug needs to be painted, he said, correct, painted, painted and drove it out.
Okay.
And it's an obstacle.
Thank you. Chance? I'll accept the move.
Properly moved, we adjourned. Probably move a little bit, join. And second? Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.